And it's time to move on to spring in ceremony and John Terrant.
I, John Terrant, hereby declare and open up the faith to perform the duties of the member in Board of Education Stigler School District, time number I twenty of Hensville County, Oklahoma, and to best my ability, and I will faithfully discharge all the duties pertaining to said office and obey the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, to approve the spring in John Terrant's time. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes. This time we move on to appropriate minutes from our regular meetings, March eleventh, twenty nineteen, pages one through three, and our special meeting. Special meeting.
There's no changes.
Either one of them, March twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen, page four.
Make motion for the third one. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by John, to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, March eleventh, twenty nineteen, and our special meeting, March twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen. Kenny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Senator?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
This time we move on to the approval of the encumbrances.
Okay, we'll turn over to the encumbrances. The R and R seamless guttering, that's for some repairs at the high school. We've got two firecam safety systems, and that's the new local company that started up that's helping us with our, a lot of our fiber work. Do you remember like the first month I was here when the semi truck yanked down the fiber line and went to the high school? Well, we've made it till recently with that in place, so now we've gone from the tech ed building to the stadium wireless. So that should be solved for a long time to come. Anglin Crane, we're replacing a ten-ton heat and air unit on top of the high school and the library, and so we brought in a crane, we're bringing in a crane, and then an Anglin Crane is out at Coca-Cola, and they've been very, very good to us. They're gonna come, bring their crane, set the unit, and also work with us on some lights at the baseball field for five hundred dollars. So for them to drive fifty miles one way for five hundred dollars is a pretty good deal. Those are some really good people that have been good to us. Four twelve, this is interesting. We needed an app for a special ed program, but we couldn't put it on a school credit card, so we had to go to Walmart and buy iTunes cards so that we could get the app and put it on the iPad for the students. So, you know, just some of the ways you have to go around everything that's in place so that you can take care of your kids. Four fifteen again, the firecam safety systems, those are, we had a lot of the areas at the elementary school that weren't covered by cameras, and we still don't have them all, but we made great strides in that, and then we also have room to add some more cameras to that system as we determine how much more coverage we want. The two buses that we have the grants for are encumbered in this month. Four nineteen, four twenty, four twenty-one, we had a bus problem in Stillwater, and it was after hours, and this is just kind of a shout out to our people. Peepo and Dennis grabbed a bus and a truck, drove to Stillwater, got the bus to the students and the sponsor, pulled the gas tank and the DEF tank off, drained both of them, drove to Oklahoma City, got a fuel filter, drove back to Stillwater, and changed the fuel filter, and we, someone mistakenly put DEF in the diesel, so.
They didn't even stay all night?
So, no, they didn't stay all night. They drove home that night, or did they stay all night?
No, they did.
No, they, they got in about three or four that morning, but they did eat a meal on us. They thought that was kind of tricky, you know, but we excused them for that. But no, they're great guys, and I'm telling you, our kids had a bus as fast as you could possibly get it, and the thought of them calling the wrecker and having them pull that wrecker to Stigler America from Stillwater never one time entered their mind. I mean, we're gonna get this fix, and we're gonna get it back there, so. So they, they did, went above and beyond right there. You'll see a little more travel, like four twenty-four, that's the state speech competition. As we have people that qualify for state, we've always paid for that out of general fund so that it doesn't drain their activity fund, and so it was, I hope we had spent a lot of money on that between now and the end of school, because we'll have a lot of people qualified for state. And Jeanette loves to make travel arrangements too, so that's always a plus too.
Speaker?
Speaker.
I always do the long date.
Does anyone have any questions on any other purchase order? Okay. Other financials? Let's see where we are on month-by-month expenditures. Remember, with the salaries increases, we're gonna be up there every month, but our bills, FY eighteen, nineteen, you can see where we are for the year, even with inflation and what we spend on textbooks and everything, we're still below where we were at this time last year. You can see our monthly cash forward at this time, we're still above of where we were last year as well. And then, believe it or not, we have, we're almost ready for graduation, so I've skipped one part, my fault. Let's go back to the financial statement, the income expenditure. Also, you know, we've been having trouble at Hopkins, well, their pumps have been shut down, so we're having to use total for most of our gas purchases until those pumps are turned back on, so it's been, you're gonna see a lot more on the gasoline report. We typically don't do that, but we can go through total, and they're set up to take all the taxes, all the state taxes off the fuel, so we're paying basically the same price we were, but we just can't, can't access it through Hopkins in their card now. In the general fund, we started out with two million, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. We had monthly receipts of seven hundred and sixty-seven, five eighty-six. That brought us to a total cash available of three million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and forty-seven cents, minus the warrants of this month, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and five cents, which gave us a total monies, monthly balance of two million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, thirty-six dollars and forty-six cents, minus the outstanding warrants of forty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and eleven cents, it got us to our total monies available at the end of the month at right under two point seven million dollars. You can see that our building fund has gotten back up over the seven hundred thousand dollar mark. We're probably expecting another twenty thousand or so for this month, so we should be able to finish out the softball dressing room and still be right on track with the seven hundred thousand dollar balance. Child nutrition, we checked it as compared to last year, and that's because so much of our money comes through claims. If you get it in that day before, that day after, it can really mess with your balance on a comparative basis, but we went back over the month, over the entire year, month-to-month, and our average has fallen basically where it was last year. We're actually, I was surprised, our receipts are actually up a little bit this year, so it surprised me, but financially, we are doing very well, so any questions on that? Before we go any further, I wanna welcome the Bo Champ family. We're thrilled to have you all here, and this is a great board, it's a great community. They will accept you, they will take you in, and you will love it here, and we're certain that, Adam, you're gonna provide the leadership this school needs. I told them when they started searching, they're gonna trade up, okay? And once they get rid of me, things are looking bright in the future, so we don't wanna worry about that, but it's, we're thrilled to have you, and also know that these girls have been in the car and seated and have been very well behaved the whole time they're here, so if you all would like to exit now, I'll make sure that your dad gets back to the hotel sometime tonight, okay?
All right. Thank you guys so much.
You're welcome.
Nice meeting you all.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you guys.
We can do anything.
What's your opinion?
Ready, get out of here. Thanks. Bye.
Make a motion to approve the encumbrances.
Question made by John, seconded by Jennifer, to approve the encumbrances as listed. John?
Yes.
Jennifer? Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie? Okay, this time, move on to other comment. The Board of Education invites public comment at this point in the regular meeting, A, comments concerning agenda items, no one present for that. B, other comments in accordance with policy BEV dash R, no one present for that. Information items, different tenders.
This is a little different from a normal superintendent's report. I've been working, trying to have this ready for this board meeting for four years, and I finally made it. For you guys, starting today, here's a, I'll meet with the principals tomorrow in case there is anything that's left out, but here's a complete list, and I also have it going to the paper tomorrow as well, a complete list of all the end-of-the-year activities for every site. It's an incredible number, and, you know, we haven't really done this before because they really don't just always mesh together, and it took a lot of time, and we've had some scheduling changes already since this started, so it did take a lot of time, and but there are a few things. You can see that today and tomorrow, third and fourth grade are testing, so when I hear that there's people playing three Little League games tonight, and I'm thinking they're testing tomorrow, I get really nervous, but then the high school has, is into the ACT makeup test, so that's going along well. Next week, we've got high school doing some testing. April the eighteenth, we've got the kindergarten Easter egg hunt, so that's always a big deal and something that those kids look forward to. And then, as you can see, when you get into the end of April, you've got regional golf tournaments, you've got district baseball tournaments, and things are starting to wind down. Also, the dates on the spring high school play production are on there. The state FFA convention, which is also there, when I was talking about those hotel rooms, that's the same time as the state golf, and I may try to make both of those this year. That'd be a challenge, but I may be able to do that. Got the high school softball regional, and then down in April, or May the ninth, last year was our first ever kindergarten graduation, and it went really, really well, except the fact that our auditorium couldn't hold them. It wasn't close. So this year, we've moved it to the auditorium at the First Assembly of God, and they have a really good production put together. I think it's gonna be a very, a really neat way to show off the achievements of our kindergarten kids, and so I'm really looking forward to that. May tenth, we've got the eighth grade bash, and then, again, we're, the ministerial alliance, because again of a lack of seating capacity, have moved the baccalaureate service to the assembly auditorium as well, so we can hold about two hundred and fifty more people. So, like I said, that was a decision made by the ministerial alliance, and I think it will be a very positive thing for us. And then, we turn around, and we've got graduation, and then as soon as graduation's over, we've got a band that's going to Washington DC to compete on the national level, and we've got an academic team that's going to New Orleans for Nationals, so it doesn't slow down very much until June, and then it gets really fast-paced at that point, getting ready for the next year, so. But I put this, or I had this put together for you, and then when you get ready to go, now, I was told, I was told that this one's mine. Is that right? Is that what you said?
That's what he said, yes.
But our art department has some gifts for you all, you can pick what you would like to take.
And if someone picks something you want, he said he could make that for you?
They just wanted to show off what they're doing, and, you know, we were.
Oh, we're the Buffalo?
We had dropped our art program, and we worked with the Choctaws and put it in conjunction with our Indian Ed, and the Choctaw Nation was in full support of doing things like this with the ceramics and the beadwork, and so we were able to pay for that through federal funds and re-implement that program, and it's really been, and now Mr. Champ's actually started an after-hours program for adults that's giving some, gives a very positive response, and he didn't ask for any pay or anything, he just is working to promote his program in local interest, and so it's going real well, so. But don't forget to take one of those, leave my beer.
Okay, everybody good with that? We move on. Action topic A, consideration of summer school classes for our Northland, handicapped students, physical occupational, speech therapy, grade school, and middle school summer programs, page eighteen.
Okay, these are the same programs that we ran last year. We'll have more specific people as who we're gonna hire at our next board meeting, but these are the same programs, we just need your approval so that we can go ahead and start staffing them.
Make a motion to approve summer school classes for the Northland kids students.
Second. Motion made by John, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the summer school class list for Northland handicapped students, physical occupational, speech therapy, grade school, and middle school summer programs. John?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Action topic B, consideration of budget revisions for the eighteen-nineteen school year, page nineteen.
Okay, there are no large changes on your, on your list. The ones that are highlighted are the ones that were changing, and for instance, driver's ed, we lost a little bit there. We had it budgeted at nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars, and we actually gonna get eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety. Reading sufficiency, we were up six dollars. Alternative ed, we're down four hundred dollars. Title I, we're up about twelve thousand dollars. So it really didn't change our bottom line, but as we get prepared to close out the year, if we can get these revised and make sure that we're not gonna overspend, because some of them will try to leave a zero balance, so we like to get that done early so that we can go ahead and close out as the year starts to end. So are there any questions? IDEAB, that's, that's up four thousand dollars, so for the most part, as believe it or not, federal funds are up, local funds are down, but none of them were a significant amount at all.
Make a motion to approve the budget revision for the eighteen-nineteen school year. Second.
Question made by John, seconded by David, to accept a budget revision for the eighteen-nineteen school year. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes. Action topic C, consideration of approval of FCC LA attending the FCC L, National Leadership Conference in Anaheim, California on June twenty-ninth through July fourth, twenty nineteen, page twenty.
Okay, and we'll have some students competing there, and then we also have our first state officer ever, and that state officer is required to attend the national convention, and it's really nice because it ends in, it begins in one fiscal year and ends in the other, and I'll be leaving in between that, so it's, the moaning and groaning can take place after I'm gone.
Okay, you're a baby.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve FCC LA attending the National Leadership Conference in Anaheim.
Awesome. Question made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to approve the FCC LA attending the National Leadership Conference in Anaheim, California. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Action topic.
And I just wanna make a point, that in the last two or three years, we've just had a tremendous number of organizations that have qualified for Nationals, and they, no one has had to not go because they couldn't raise the funds, and the funds haven't been coming out of this office. It's definitely, it's definitely a community that's very proud of our students and have been very, very supportive in this particular area of our students and their success, so.
Action topic D, consideration to review and possible adjustment of the eighteen-nineteen school calendar, page twenty-one.
Okay, so we, every year, we do the paperwork to go to hours instead of days, and so if we do have bad or inclement weather, we've got, we had started out with six days built-in, and we took one that was a snow day that we didn't have to use for a snow day, so I've not had, and with all of the schools around us that let out every Friday for the last nine weeks or things like that, I've not had one employee ask me about the additional hours that we have built-in, and I just think it speaks so highly of our staff and, and their commitment to their jobs. So we were looking at this, and when we put together the calendar this year, the only question, or that's probably not the right word, but April nineteenth, we decided to take out the Monday following Easter instead of the Friday before Easter. So, but there were some people that did say before the vote that they would rather take out Friday, but we voted, and everyone agreed on the calendar, and there've been no problems. So what I was gonna ask you all to do is, if we were to take out that Friday, that'd give everyone a four-day weekend after testing, and even at that, we're required to have a thousand and eighty hours, and even if we take out that day, that's still gonna give us one thousand, one hundred and five hours, which is twenty-five hours more than what we're required by law, which is a little over four days of education that, that we're gonna get. So this is kind of a reward to our students for a good year and all of our employees. I was going to ask to revise our calendar to extend the Easter weekend from the nineteenth to the twenty-second.
Do you reckon it's not gonna snow?
I'm gonna say that it's not gonna snow anymore.
I make a motion to approve the revised calendar, page eighteen.
Question made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to make an adjustment for the school calendar for the eighteen-nineteen school year, taking the Friday before Easter on April nineteenth. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes. Action topic D, consideration of resolution to this school and library university services' E-rate for the nineteen-twenty school year. This resolution authorizes filing of the form for seventy-one applications for funding year nineteen-twenty and attainment of the applicant's share upon approval of funding or receipt of services, page twenty-two and twenty-three.
Okay, this is our category two, which is for switches and access points. This is the one that we only get every five years, and we only do that after we've gotten a letter of approval to go ahead and move forward. You can see that the total amount that's gonna cost for category two, on page twenty-two, the second line, is seventy-six thousand, ninety-five dollars. The E-rate funded amount is sixty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six, so at the most, it would cost the school fifteen thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and three cents to get that seventy-six thousand, ninety-five dollars worth of access points and switches, which is, as we continue to purchase more Chromebooks and laptops and devices like that, those can become very, very important, so, but we just need the approval so we can go ahead and file the four seventy-one.
Make a motion to approve the E-rate resolution for the nineteen-twenty school year.
Awesome. Question made by John, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the E-rate for the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty school year. John?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Action topic E, consideration of resolution and lease purchase agreement with First National Bank of Stewa for financing the LED lighting, page twenty-four to twenty-nine.
Okay, we approved the upgrade of the LED lighting at the middle school and high school at the last board meeting, and all three of the companies that bid that gave me their lease purchase information and encouraged us to look locally to see if anyone wanted to be competitive with what they could get it financed for, and particularly First National Bank met or exceeded every, every offer that was out there. They're, they're willing to do the four-year lease purchase at a four percent rate, and that was as good or better than any of the other three institutions that typically do this for a lot more regular than, than our local people do, but they did work with, with our vendors, as well as their, Mike worked hard with his board and got things put in place so that we could get the same savings while staying local for the financing, so I would recommend going with the First National. If you look on the page twenty-nine. Past all of that other stuff at the top.
Okay, see.
So we're getting, the lighting's at ninety-three thousand, and the interest is at sixty-three hundred dollars over the four years, so.
So should we pay the settlement fund?
Yes.
Would we?
Yes, we could have. Or we could have paid it out of building fund, but the premise was, on a cash flow basis, our savings on electricity is actually gonna pay for this. So it's, it's very, it's very revenue neutral. That was, that was the thinking on the, on the lease purchase.
How long will we start seeing the savings today?
Month number one.
Month number one, we will start seeing the savings, and then it'll be later.
Yes.
Okay. Is anybody gonna keep up with that so we can kinda see it? Are you gonna send me? Okay. I have about ten minutes. Are you?
Make a motion to approve the lease purchase with First National.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by David, to accept the lease purchase agreement with First National Bank of Stewa for financing the LED lighting for four years at four percent interest rate, ninety-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars initially. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie? Okay, this time we move on to executive session, proposed executive session to discuss the following business pursuant to section three of chapter B, one and two of the Oklahoma League Act, and is authorized by Oklahoma Statute Title twenty-five. Number one, discussion of continued employment or non-reemployment of career status-certified teachers and professionally certified teachers for the nineteen-twenty school year, pages thirty to thirty-three. and probationary certified teachers for the nineteen, twenty school year, pages thirty to thirty-three. Number two, discussion of resignation of Debbie Allen, first grade teacher effective end of eighteen, nineteen school year, page thirty-four. Number three, discussion to employ a grade school secretary for the nineteen, twenty school year. And four, discussion to employ a high school math teacher for the nineteen, twenty school year. And number five, discussion of approval of contract for the superintendent for the nineteen, twenty school year.
Make a motion to convene the executive session.
Question made by John, seconded by Jennifer to convene an executive session at seven twenty-nine PM. John?
Yes.
Jennifer? Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by John to return the board to open session at eight oh four PM. Kenny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Members present during executive session were John Turner, Dave Huggins, Kenny Whitson, Jennifer Turner, Susan White, Superintendent Monty Guthrie was also present. No votes were taken. I didn't see that.
Make a motion to employ the career status certified teachers and probationary teachers for the nineteen, twenty school year.
Awesome. Question made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to employ, um, the career status certified teachers and probationary certified teachers for the nineteen, twenty school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to accept Debbie Allen's resignation effective at the end of eighteen, nineteen school year.
Second. Question made by John, seconded by Jennifer to accept the resignation of Debbie Allen, first grade teacher effective end of eighteen, nineteen school year. Uh, John?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Susie, I'm sorry, she's second grade. Debbie Allen is second grade, not first grade.
Second grade, okay. Second grade teacher. Anyway, okay. Moving on to.
Make a motion to employ Stephanie Davis as a high, grade school secretary for the nineteen, twenty, second.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by David to employ Stephanie Davis as grade school secretary for the nineteen, twenty school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to hire Joe Copeland, high school math teacher for a nineteen, twenty school year.
Second.
Question made by David, seconded by John to employ Joe Copeland as, uh, math teacher for the nineteen, twenty school year. David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to employ Adam Bo Champ for the, uh, previous contract figure superintendent.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by David to accept the contract with Adam Bo Champ for the superintendent for the nineteen, twenty school year on a yearly basis. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. John?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic, another A, election of school board officers. President, vice president, clerk, deputy, deputy clerk.
I wanna stay around that.
Looks like you're standing. You're gonna decide that without me, or?
Yes, yes, we do.
One more year. David, I mean, John, you're, you're stuck five more years, okay? I'll take one a year. Okay.
Make a motion to keep our, uh, what do we call them?
Deputy officers.
School board officers.
Deputy, you want to, John?
As they were last year.
Kenny, who seconded? I'll second the question.
I'll second Jennifer's, like, remove her, but she had to second.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer for, um, school board officers, president Susan White, vice president David Huggins, clerk Kenny Whitson, deputy clerk John Turner, time. Kenny?
Yes.
Yes, John?
Yes.
David?
Yes, she pulled two first children, Kenz, I'm telling her.
And Susie, yes. Any new business?
None.
No new business?
No ma'am.
Okay. Motion for adjournment, please?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Question made by John, seconded by David at eight oh nine PM for adjournment. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes.